Called the Planning Commission to order at this time. Stuart, if you do a roll call for us, please.
Yes, sir. Chris Crowley. Patrick O'Brien.
Here.
John Cost.
President.
Vivian Diggs.
Here.
Garfield Parker.
Here.
Alan Garland. Roger McKinley.
Here.
Charles Williams.
Here.
Heidi Wilkins-Cory.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Would someone on this side of the aisle do the invocation and the pledge, please? Calling no names.
You going to stand?
Yes.
Father, we just praise you, Lord, and we thank you for today. We thank you, Lord, that you have chosen us to be part of doing these things for the county that we do, and we ask for your wisdom and your guidance, Lord, tonight as we hear this gentleman present his case for his public hearing. And I just pray, Lord, that you would be with us all tonight as we go over these issues with the county in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Do we have anybody online?
Yes, Mr. Haney is online, and he said he would like to speak.
Okay, you want to do that now?
Sure.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. I just wanted everybody to know I was online if you needed to ask me anything.
Okay, that's great. We're going to have-
Yeah, I'm a little bit under the weather, and I didn't want to come to the meeting night and spread anything.
All right, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, okay. Approval of agenda.
I move the agenda be approved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes for the November, well, November-
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first meeting.
Move they be approved as written?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Commissioners comments? Lot going on in Northumberland? Okay, all right.
Like this is kind of worst we just want a recess.
Just want a recess, okay. Staff member comments?
Only comment I have is at the next meeting, of course, we'll have the elections, and then we'll also, while we're doing some bookkeeping stuff, we'll need to appoint members to the capital improvement subcommittee because it's that time of year again.
Okay, we do that in January?
We'll do that in January, yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
The schedule is we're going to get the county minister is going to review all the projects, and we'll get them in late January, so probably the subcommittee probably meet in February, and I think the tentative schedule is for us to have a public hearing in March. So there may be two or three meetings in February, so anybody that's going to be on the committee needs to understand that, and we need to get it hopefully done in March and then send it off to the board in April, so they'll have plenty of time with that. But capital improvement plan coming.
All right, okay. Any citizens' comments other than to the public hearing, something else? Anybody online? Any citizens' comments? All right, okay. So we're doing the public hearings, Stuart?
Yes, sir. I'll go get the sign sheet. Put that up.
Obviously, there's an applicant, but I'll wait and get it, and then we can get them all on.
We're strictly by the book here. Everything is right. Got to follow the law.
So this public hearing is a request by James Robert Cottle, Cottle Jr., for conditional use permit to allow a small retail business furniture repair shop on property zone A1 agricultural. This property is shown as tax map 9A double circle one lot 34, is one acre in size and located in 2829 Northumberland Highway in Lotsburg. Let me bring up-
The lot is right on the highway.
Yes, sir. I'll show you a map that I sent out with y'all. It's basically Wamsley Road. If you keep on going, you'll run into his parking lot, cross from Signet's in Lotsburg. This is a, I'm not sure it's a growth area or a support area, but it's in the village in that that's where we want businesses to be. And it's an existing building, and it's been used for contractor storage for quite a few years, and it's nice to see some old buildings getting used and put back into service.
When was the last time it was used for agriculture, agricultural purpose?
I would have to defer to Mr. Marston, but I don't know if he knows either. It was a contractor-
Well, that's Anderson's.
It's ever been used for agricultural purposes, but because it's owned agricultural, it allows for a lot of uses, or more uses than most zoning districts.
I'm guessing it had to be 50 years or more, at least, last, perhaps, last time it was farmland.
Philip, is there any reason why we should, other than the fact we haven't gone through the motions of doing this as a public hearing for that purpose, any reason not to change it to B1 or something like that?
I mean, one reason would be there is no other B1 zoning right in that general Aside from that, I mean, the lot and the building itself certainly appear to be a B1 business use, but it is agricultural on both sides, so I'm assuming that's why it got zoned the way that it did.
Is there any reason why we couldn't do both? Because he's been waiting around for this. I'd hate to make him wait through another process for that to be rezoned.
So you're suggesting we do the conditional use now and then come back as a rezone?
Yes, yes.
Philip, any other minute?
Is rezoning on the table?
I don't know that it's ever been generated by the planning commission or by staff. I think he would have to apply to rezone the building if he was proposing another business use, but I'm just not aware of any rezoning that has occurred that the applicant did not apply for that rezoning.
Okay, but we are a legal body, so we probably have that right unless somebody objects, and I don't know who that would be. It's a recommendation only, and Board of Supervisors ultimately the decision maker.
Board of Supervisors. Have to ask above approval, and I don't know how long it would take for rezoning. I assume a conditional use permit would be a lot faster.
Okay, so we are-
Mr. Carl, did you, are you renting the building, or you actually own that?
I bought it.
You bought it?
Yes. You plan to grow crops on it, too? Winter wheat.
I'm a good cropper.
Mr. Carl, tell us a little bit about what you're, what you're going to do with it. I'm just curious.
Well, just, like I say, I'm just going to do furniture.
If you just come up to the microphone right here and state your-
I'm just going to, you know, fix furniture and sell, sell some antiques and collectibles and just that kind of stuff.
That's good.
But I've been fixing furniture for 46 years, so that's what I mainly do, you know, is just repair furniture. That's pretty much what I do.
So you'll have a retail capability inside as well?
Well, I wanted to, you know, sell a few things here and there, you know, just little collectibles and stuff like that.
Cool.
And I buy coins and, you know, stuff like that.
Okay.
I'm a coin collector, so I buy a lot of that kind of stuff, but that's pretty much it.
I have a question.
Oh, sure.
Currently, there's a semi trailer-
I'm moving that out.
Because I noticed on your plan it wasn't there, and that's what I was going to ask you.
Yeah, I've already sold it. It's already gone, but they haven't taken it yet.
Okay.
I'm just waiting for them to-
That's great.
To take it.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other question?
I have a question. Have you read the conditions that the county has asked that you comply with?
Yes, yes, sir.
They're on the screen here.
And you're okay with all those, as far as parking spaces, and that's going to be okay for you?
Well, I'm, actually, it was a lot of parking spaces at one time, but the gravel was greased with grass, so I'm going to just regravel everything.
I see.
And then I'll make it, I'll make the gravel go all the way around.
So they park anywhere they want?
Yeah. Well, you know, I want to make it go all the way around the building so you can drive in and out. There's two aprons, so they can, you know, go all the way. It's never been that way, but that's the way I was going to do it.
That's good, okay.
To make it easier people get in and out, and it should be like parking for at least 10 cars, but I don't think I ever had that many, but if I did, that'd be great, but.
And you work by yourself?
Yes, sir. My father-in-law's 87, and he helps me some, but-
Wow.
He's, he just had a heart attack, so he's kind of having a hard time doing much anything, but he still wants to do it because he's the one who taught me to trade, so.
Okay, Mr. Cottle, let me just stop for a moment.
Sure.
I wanted to announce to the, to the people that are online that this, we are, we are open, the public hearing is now open, and the owner is now speaking. All right, okay. Any other questions?
This first requirement, is, is the Department of Transportation putting some kind of requirements on your access to the building?
No one said anything-
Okay.
-to me.
Okay, I just noticed it in the very first condition and-
Yeah, they, I knew they had a hearing, they was thinking about putting a strip in the middle or something, or, I don't know.
But they haven't given you any reason not to be able to open?
Not to me, they did to Anderson's. They, they said something to them, but not to me, they never-
The existing entrance is satisfactory, I guess.
I think they, they was going to put a turning lane in the center.
Yeah, they're going to-
That's what I was told about.
Restripe the road.
Yeah, restripe the roads, but that was all they said they was going to do.
Right, and you're a low-volume commercial, I would imagine, Philip?
Yeah.
Yeah, which is the easiest to get access to, because you don't have a bunch of traffic like a convenience stores or something like that.
Plus, I always got two nice aprons going in.
Yeah, that's why I was going to make it come all the way around. Get in and out pretty easy.
I was curious if they were going to make you do something more than that, but that's good.
I hope not, but.
And I think when they restripe it, are they going to reduce the speed limit at 35?
It'll be worse than Calio, trust, trust me.
But it won't be as bad as Warsaw.
Nothing will be as bad as Warsaw.
It is.
That's very bad.
Yeah, that's definitely a little bad.
Philip and I have not received any correspondence from anybody opposing this conditional use, so there's been no input from any citizens regarding it.
And I went around and talked to everybody around there, you know, just to let them know.
Yeah, be a good neighbor.
So they will know. I don't want somebody to come and throw a rock through the window because I moved in. They all seem to be good about it.
So whatever the planning commission would like to do, but whoever, whoever would like to make a motion, if they could just say that they, their motion includes the suggested conditions, you don't have to read them, but they will be forwarded. If you put that in your motion, it'll be forwarded to the board with the motions.
So move.
Jump ahead of yourself.
You got, you got a name, and you got to make the motion. You can't, so move is, you know, just go ahead and make your motion.
All right, I move the, the, the planning commission recommend approval by the Board of Supervisors to the request by James Robert Cottle Jr., owner, for a continual use permit to, to allow a small retail business furniture repair shop on property, property zone A1 agriculture, shown as tax map parcel 9A paragraph 1-34, located at 2890, 2829 North Potomac Highway.
Motion made.
With the suggested conditions.
With, subject to the suggested conditions.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? All right, we're good.
Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Great to be in the building.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
All right.
Most traffic in that building for the last, like, five years ago.
Okay.
I don't remember last time I did, it was an active business there.
It's been 40, 50 years.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Yeah, okay. Stuart, do we go to the work session?
Yes, sir. Chapter four.
All right. Chapter four.
All right, Kristen, where would you be going?
I have a big holiday tomorrow.
Other places than here. So I went through Mr. Cost's letter, the suggested changes, and if you recall, not the last meeting, but the meeting before, the table here that was, all that information is basically in the map. You all said it was okay to, to get rid of, so it's been struck that you all, I don't know if Mr. Cost or everybody had a problem with the bottleneck language, so we just took, I just took the whole sentence out. We still want the four lanes. I think the board still would like that in there. The current way that VDOT funds programs is through the smart scale approach, and it's unlikely we're going to get that four lane, but we can keep on asking. It's no harm in asking for it. So I move that, change the reference for figure one to the 2024 traffic, again, change to 2024. The vehicle count was about 4,000 in 2016, and now it's about 5,000, so I changed that. Didn't want to put exact numbers in there, I want it to be general, general conditions. This is the old map, you'll see the strike through, that means it's going to be deleted, so this is a 2014, and I put in the 2024 one that I showed y'all at the last meeting that has the different classifications of roads with, with how many vehicles per day. The new data has more roads, this just had more of the primary and secondaries, so this has pretty much every road, but, you know, all you got to do is look at the color and section and figure out where you're at there. The second map, well, no, we're not there yet. It's getting bigger again. I just added Calio because it narrows in Calio, and it's not four-lane in Calio, so I just added that as a point of order, but you all wanted me to address the road diet, what VDOT is going to do with Lotsburg and Calio. So they're talking about traffic management, so I said the problem is the local traffic competes with through traffic, and then added this, in the villages of Calio and Lotsburg, VDOT is implementing what they call a road diet, which entails reducing the lanes to two, to a three-lane thoroughfare with a third center lane of Route 360 acting as a turn lane. VDOT rationale for creating three lanes is to reduce side and rear collisions when vehicles cross highway lanes to turn left within Calio and Lotsburg. VDOT hopes the center lane, center turn lane will help alleviate contact conflicts between local and through traffic. This traffic management is, also was tied in with that highway corridor overlay that was unpopular, and VDOT is doing that, so I just struck that because we don't want any references in that. That's a VDOT deal. So the functional classification, I don't think I showed you this time, but it's basically the same data with what VDOT calls the black roads are the local roads, then the orange roads are minor collectors, and that's where a lot, some local roads come together and create more traffic, and then there's a major collector is one that even more roads connect to, minor arterial is a through traffic in the region, but not necessarily statewide, and then principal is a U.S. highway, so that's the red. And of course, that was 2014, but I recreated that for 2024 as well. Now, this map was in, in the comp plan, and it's redundant. I, I don't, it basically just says the same thing except the lane widths, and I didn't think it added that much. If y'all want me to leave it in, we can, and if we remove that, then the next, next map is 42A, we can get rid of the A, and this will be just 42, and this is just basically showing the route improvements. Now, the numbers aren't $20,23, but I don't have any way. I remember asking VDOT for a preliminary estimate, and it was like they didn't want to give me any numbers whatsoever, and so I don't know if we should leave that as it is, just strike it, or how y'all would like to do, but for right now, I just left it the way it was.
Well, that's the most current data we've got, if something-
Right, and, you know, Fredericksburg and Stafford County gets all the VDOT money in our district. That's basically the way it is. But anyway, so I was going to leave that as a placeholder and leave that as it is. Bay Transit, I went to their website, and this is a public transportation section, and I put in hours of operation, and you have to call 24 hours before your appointment. It's basically, they come and pick you up. It's not like you go to a bus stop, you have to call and request it, and then you call the line, and then you speak with the ride scheduler, and then I put the website so that the people can learn more about it.
Does it make sense, given the context of Chesterport, that it say, at present being only public transportation providers, Bay Transit, and then what do you have from there?
If that's, if that's your pleasure, we could do that. I mean, there is medical transport in the county. If you've seen them, King of Mares, and there's quite a few minivans that you, that people call and take to doctor's appointments, things like that.
That's not public transport.
Okay, okay. So you said at present time, there's only, only one public transport provider?
Are there no Uber drivers or any of those?
None of them are.
Uber didn't work out. We've had some of them try it, but they didn't stay with us.
Yeah, not enough, I guess.
Okay, I had that at the beginning.
I mean, is Bay Transit a free service?
Yeah.
It is, right.
Okay. They have stipulations that if you're not there when you show up, you get a strike, and like they'll quit coming to pick you up if you don't show up on time. And then the other thing is at 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., so if you're working a late shift or something like that, you got to find another ride home, but as far as I understand, they'll come, they'll come for you if you ask. The bicycle facilities, I added a sentence in there that transportation is, reinforces the goals of the comprehensive plan and alternatives to automobile dependency, and since Northumberland County has been designated a national heritage area by the United States Congress in December 2022, bicycle tourism has been increasing in the area.
Is there any data to support that assertion?
I've seen, I've seen them in the summertime.
I know, we've seen them.
I've seen, they got the saddlebags in the back, and they're long haulers. I've seen them. I mean, it's anecdotal evidence.
Okay.
But anyway, so instead of mentioning it as a designated bicycle trail, I wanted to emphasize that it's a part of the Potomac Heritage National Scenic Trail, and I was talking with Lisa Hall with the Tourism Commission, and she went up to a conference for Chesapeake Bay gateways and trails, and I don't think any other county has signage. We have signs, actually, if you see the P HD signs. The PDC got those signs and was able to install and work with VDOT, get them installed, and other counties were really interested in, in how do we get that done? How can we make that happen? Because we're the only ones that seem to have that. So anyway, of course, there's no bike lanes, just you have to deal with traffic, but we, comparatively to Northern Virginia, we don't have any traffic, or so I'm told.
I have it.
And there's spaces because of maps and things, but I'll clean all that up, and of course, there's no need to change that. I'll check that, I'm pretty sure that's an accurate length. Talking about the athletic fields, I wanted to state that the elementary school where it's located and the four ball fields. State facilities are the natural areas, and nothing's changed there. The Chesapeake Bay Access Plan is mentioned, and we talk about beaches, and in, in the table here, I took, I mean, if y'all like, I can delete Hampton Hall Landing, but instead, I just took out the fishing and said it's in development, and I'll put a parentheses there. We added for Great Waikamiko Fishing Pier, car top canoe launch, because we did that, of course, last year. So basically explained what we did down at the fishing pier, continuing work on providing county citizens public water access. Planning Commission with assistance, the county staff worked with VDOT to obtain a VDOT land use permit to allow rudimentary canoe kayak launch to be constructed under the Route 200 bridge adjacent to the Great Waikamiko Fishing Pier in 2023. Currently, the planning commission exploring public water access options, excuse me, at Hampton Hall Landing on Hampton Hall Creek near the boundary with West Warren County, just to update them that we are moving forward in that. There's a paddler's guide that the Northumberland Association for Progressive Stewards have created, their URL changed, so I put in the new link to that. There's also water trails that the Planning District, when I was back at the Planning District Commission, created, and wanted to cite that the Northern Neck Ches, we worked with the Northern Neck Chesapeake Bay Access Authority. I think it was just the acronym there, and I wanted to spell it out. And then they, this is the, the PDC actually has their own nature, nature trails and water trails, so that's a link, and then in addition, there's a state water trail network, a website that has Middle Peninsula, Hampton Roads, and the Northern Neck, that has our four water trails on it, so I went in, put that URL, checked it as well.
You can back to the Northern Neck also, you could replace that with the acronym.
Okay, all right. Let's see, 420, second paragraph. So just want to give them another plug. I mean, it's kind of redundant, but if anybody wanted to learn more about them, they could go there, up there. I did not have a link to it. So Mr. Cost in his revision letter said, what's the status of all these updates or projects? And if you recall, back in 2004, we had a grant that we put forth to Jesse Bald upon to try to put a fishing pier at Cooper's Landing, canoe kayak launch at Rose Landing, canoe kayak launch at fishing, Glee Point Fishing Pier, and what was the other one? Hampton Hall Creek. We did not get that grant. So this basically says that we're trying to go after these new, new sites, but Luttrell and I met when I was told to PDC with VDOT about trying to put a fishing pier at Cooper's Landing, and I think I've told the story before, but VDOT owns the land because they want a place for the snow piles to turn around, and they have leased it to the Department of Game and Land Fisheries, which is now Department of Wildlife Resources, and they're the ones that maintain and operate the ramp. They say that that site is too small for the intended use right now, it doesn't meet their criteria for parking for just a boat ramp, and therefore adding additional amenities that would draw more people there is counterproductive, and it would make parking even worse, so they will not do it. We asked them to give, the DGIF lease was going to run out, and then we asked them to give it to the state, and they said, give it to the county, and they said, well, we're not in the business of taking landings away from the Department of Game and Land Fisheries. So it's pretty much nothing's going to happen at Cooper's Landing anytime soon. I think the lease is for 50 years or something like that. So I just struck all of Cooper's Landing. I mean, you can still bank fish there, you can still launch a canoe kayak, you can still launch a powerboat, but as far as putting a fishing pier, it's just not going to happen. Rose Landing-
Put it somewhere else. It does say you can launch a kayak and that other stuff?
Yeah, that's up here in the chart.
Got it.
Yeah, it's in the chart.
Okay.
And so Rose- And so Rose Landing, this last year, with ARPA money, we tried to get a floating dock section attached to that pier. But we ran out of money. So but we did get an engineer drawing of what, how it would be built and what it looks like, and filled out the joint permanent application for the state and the Army Corps of Engineers and VMRC. So we've gotten that far done, but we just, all we need now is money to build it. So that's still going forward. There's no.
Maybe that last line were positive, but funding to implement the project was lacking in Dead Sea. But funding to implement the project is still needed.
Okay.
Any maintenance was those floating kayak launch platforms?
Yeah, I mean, there's maintenance on everything.
They gotta be coppered or anything like that?
I'm sorry?
Have they gotta be coppered, maybe to keep barnacles off of them or anything like that?
No, but at a high tide event, it depends on how high your pilings are that you use to connect. And I would suggest if we get pilings, that they extend ten feet above the water surface. Because Isabelle is a nine-foot surge, so that's the main thing with that. But there's always maintenance with, you know, dock splinters and nails coming up and things of that nature. But yeah, it would be a little bit more. But as far as specifically more maintenance than what's already there, not really.
Those marine floats do attract marine organisms.
I got barnacles on my floats, and I'm okay with it. It's got algae on it and barnacles. And if it's a low tide, I might go down there and scrape them off. But the plastic, I mean, I think they're guaranteed for thirty or forty years. Mr. Cost, funding for construction is still needed, is that what you?
The funding to implement the project is still needed.
Okay. Hampton Hall Creek, of course, we're going for that. Just mentioned the vegetation overtaking the site. We were gonna do a waterfront park first and possibly canoe kayak launch later that we're gonna apply for the VDOT Access Roads Program to help fund the construction of that. The Great Waukamiko River, what we had planned there was a floating dock. And that, VDOT didn't like that because it's too near their bridge pilings. So anyway, we've taken care of it in a different way, so I just struck that. So then at the top, I only put two planned improvements, and that would be Rose Landing and Hampton Hall Creek. And the boat slips are pretty static.
Speaking of Hampton Hall, is there any end of elements since last time we discussed it?
While the board passed a motion to clear the road, to pay for clearing the road, but we've not gotten that started yet. I've been talking with Mr. Tadlock. And there's some alternative forest grant money that we have, that we may be able to use some of that funding. I'm not sure that's gonna take it all. But anyway, it's which part of money we're gonna pull it from. But hopefully, we'll get that done in the wintertime when it's easy to clear it up and get that going. But the first thing is to clear the road and then get VDOT down there and apply for the grant. When I went to the VDOT Grant Workshop, I was talking to them about the Access Road Program. And they said, well, I said, well, I was hoping y'all would be able to design the entrance and build the road. And they said, well, we can design it, but we'll have to charge you for the designing. And I'm not sure how well that's gonna work out for us. But anyway, we're gonna go through and see how many hoops we need to jump through for that.
Did you get any estimate of what the design would cost?
We got two estimates from private contractors, and it was between three and five thousand dollars just to do the design. They have to do site distance, breaking distance, and engineer the roads that runoff is, and have stormwater measures in place. And it's a lot more than I thought. I thought it'd be like thousand dollars, but yeah, they came back.
Well, I believe the cost, I'm concerned what this is.
Well, I mean, I'm gonna have to work with VDOT, and then it may be a lot less hassle just to do it ourselves.
Because letting VDOT make some money on the design end increased your odds of getting some assistance on the construction.
Well, that's what I was hoping. And they said that if the VDOT, they said they're swamped. They said their engineers are swamped designing things now. And they may, if they do it in-house, it should be cheaper than the going rate for private people because it's government agency. But if they were to have to subcontract it out, then, you know, it doesn't make much sense to us doing it ourselves. But we'll have to, I want to get them down on the site and talk to them about it, and we'll go from there.
If somebody in engineering school would take that on as a project, is that something worth looking into?
I guess I would personally would rather have somebody with a little track record.
Well, it still has to be approved.
Right, right.
And certification.
Okay, so this is the Marina. Smith Point KOA ceased business, and I think they were briefly named Chesapeake, the Chesapeake Bay campground or?
They're out of business.
Yeah, yeah. So they changed the name, and then now they're not doing it.
Yeah, they lost their KOA franchise.
Right.
And changed the name, but now they're out of business.
Right, so I just struck that.
Completely, a beautiful piece of property just falling apart.
Too bad.
Mr. Cost wanted me to mention the dome that the YMCA is fundraising for to hopefully be able to use the pool for a longer period of time. Okay, well, when I accept it, I'll get that. I can't make change with the PDF, it's a Word document. But if any formatting issues, I should be able to get straight. And I envision we'll also look at all that stuff again before we do that. And I'll hopefully get all that formatting straight. With the golf courses, the commission wanted to make sure that everybody knew they were both privately owned and that the Indian Creek Yacht and Country Club is a member-only golf course and that Quentin Oaks is a public golf course. Regarding recreational facilities, Vermar Beach, the county is currently exploring the reestablishment of a picnic facility at the Vermar Beach. Again, with that ARPA money, we were gonna put some gravel and buy a couple picnic tables. And of course, we ran out of money, so that did not happen. But that's moving forward as funding allows. Regarding the park in Calio, I put a paragraph in here. The Calio Hometown Community Association, starting in two thousand twenty-three, is working on fundraising to build a public park in the village of Calio across from Moving Yalla Lane named Hometown Community Park. More than two acres of land was donated by a local business to the association for the park. The Northumberland County Board of Supervisors at their February twenty twenty-three meeting voted to exempt the CHCA's park property in Calio from real estate and personal property taxes as a show of support for the park project. Plans include restrooms, an accessible playground, a walking trail around the perimeter, and picnic areas. After those features have been constructed, the association hopes to fundraise and build a game area, a covered pavilion, and an amphitheater. The association hopes to host concerts and other outdoor entertainment and serve as a gathering place for farmers, markets, and events. So I just wanted to put a placeholder in that for that. The Pocket Park for Northumberland Public Library has been, the construction has started on that behind the library building in Heathfield between US three sixty and Courthouse Road. The park consists of a winding trail, flower garden, and benches for citizens to exercise and relax, possibly by reading a good book. Check out the library and one of the park benches.
That last paragraph is sort of technically accurate, but if you're outside of reading it, a library is constructing a park? That seems weird.
They're the ones that came to the county and they wanted it. And I think they, well, I think they want to do good, and I think they realize that kids don't spend enough time outside.
Well, first of all, are they actually doing the construction work with a contractor?
Yeah.
They have a contractor, or they're doing it themselves?
I don't know, actually.
Yeah, contract.
I believe they've got a contractor.
Yeah, I should say the library has contractors for the construction of.
Okay.
We just don't get the confusion that we have some random departments building parks and stuff like that.
Well, and the fact that you're using contractors suggests it's a more serious project.
Agreed, agreed.
Okay. The recreational facilities map has gone straight through because I wanted to add the canoe kayak launch at the Great Waukamiko Fishing Pier. I didn't add another icon because I didn't want to put a boat ramp there because it looks like a power ramp, and it's not a powerboat ramp. So anyway, I just put canoe kayak launch there as well. Everything else has stayed the same. Baseball and softball fields, we, the commission pointed out that there was an error in the side, the statement about the distance and longer outfield that baseball requires, I changed that. And I mentioned the backstop at Shell Landing and Fleaton, and whether those facilities should be investigated, determining if there's community interest in proving the ball field for future use. I left everything else the same. Basketball, there are no publicly owned basketball courts in the county. There are none at the schools. They have the gym, indoor basketball court, but they do not have any basketball courts outside. Several of the private subdivisions at the community centers have basketballs, courts. And I didn't think that was appropriate to list it. But they're, you know, in my opinion, I think Lysberg would be a great place to put, tear down the school board and put a ball field, volleyball net, horseshoes, basketball court, whatever.
Ten million dollar investment program.
Yeah, yeah. Well, maybe we'll get an entrepreneur that wants to fund it. But so that, just, I mean, it is what it is, there are none. There are no publicly owned tennis courts either. There are, again, there are some at community subdivision, community areas. But I thought it was, you know, y'all tell me, I put the closest, I go, when I go play tennis, I go to the Rappahannock Community College in Warsaw. So I put that in there. If y'all have a problem, I can strike that, but.
Is that where the Northumberland County tennis team goes?
I honestly don't know. I don't know where they, oh, I think Phillip told me they practice at Indian Creek.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I think they have their tournaments and practices down in Indian Creek. I'm pretty sure the school pays Indian Creek to do that. But, you know, I don't know the ins and outs of that.
In other places in this chapter, we've made specific recommendations. Your last paragraph is a little bit more vague. Future efforts to provide should be focused on. Maybe make a stronger recommendation that we actually need to actively consider this.
Well, if you've been listening to the Board of Supervisor meetings the last four or five months, they've been talking with the school system about the playground equipment at the elementary school. And it's been a big to-do. And there's not a lot of extra money floating around.
Got that.
So I don't want to overcommit. If y'all want to do that, I can put it in there, whatever y'all say.
I wouldn't do it at this time, really. Because there is so much friction at the moment between the school board and the Board of Supervisors, particularly on budget matters. I saw on the Rappahannock record that they're coming back and asking for one point four million more, believe it or not.
Northumberland is asking for more, or is that language?
Opposed for next year, for next year's budget.
For next year, okay.
The only reason I raise the issue is, I mean, there's a lot of wishing going on in here, and there is no call to action, hardly ever. Now, because there isn't gonna be any action, we're willing to go with that, so be it. But it just seems like a plan should be a little bit more action-oriented than wishful thinking. No disrespect for your wording, but that's basically what you're saying.
Well, I inherited a lot of this wording. But I mean, I'm here to do what you all want to do. But I know, like I said, that it's been, they've been going back and forth for quite a few months on the playground equipment.
And we won't be again in the same position.
Yeah, and it's not cheap.
Five years from now, it may be a different story. But right now, I think we gotta tread easy on recommending action. It's not the time.
Yeah, which is why we've always ended up in this position.
Well, there's never enough money. The pie is the pie, and it doesn't get much bigger, you just have to slice it in different ways. And that's, in a rural county, that's part of the problem. But we got a new business, so. So with regards to the public library, and I've done this with the other sections I'll talk to, I figure it'd best to just go to the library, send them the section that we had, and ask them to update it. So I sent it to Ms. Blue, and she sent me back this back. They reduced their hours to fifty-four hours. The attendance in two thousand twenty-three was approximately, it's gone down, twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-two. And forty-seven percent of the county has library cards, county population has library cards. The collection has thirty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-one books. And I don't know if I should just have that so specific.
It says approximately, so thirty-five thousand was fine.
Yeah, okay, I'll get rid of that, thirty-five.
One big change since that planned section of the plan was written is that the library is now sending out vans.
Yeah, the mobility van, yeah.
Which is going to cut down on in-person attendance at the library.
Right, and they also have book returns at other places. But anyway, I'll just go ahead and quickly read it.
They accept the internet.
Additional offers are given to audiobooks and videos to meet the needs of the older population and those of mobility issues. A children's youth services coordinator focuses on school-age appropriate programs to include partnerships with the county schools, boys' club, and the YMCA. The mobile library on the go participates in county-wide events, local farmers' markets, travels to county daycare, schools, and clubs as requested. There's free services available to everyone in the county. The mobile library on the go also provides home delivery of books and materials for those who cannot come to the library. Additional book drops are located in Calio, Waukamiko Church, and Burgess for those who wish to return their materials and cannot get to the library proper. Free technology support is provided daily, as is a weekly technology class at the library. And she wanted to make this a little bit peachy outlook. And it's a very busy place and lack of additional space, instead of becoming a problem, is a constant challenge. So that's basically Mrs. Blue's addition to it. And I told her, it looked good to me, but it's up to the planning commission if they want. So the school facilities, I sent an email to Dr.
Suggested their park that they put a basketball court in there, killed two birds with one's tail.
But studying with the ball bouncing would be pretty rough.
Do they, can you get books electronically through there as well? Can you check out a book electronically, or does it have to be a physical copy of a book?
I think it's physical. You can download the podcast.
No, our places have electronic copies.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, I don't, that's what she added, I can ask. I did notice other day, other summer, when we go there for the anti-litter committee meetings, and they have checkouts for yard games. And I thought that was pretty interesting that, like, I don't know if you've ever seen the golf ball with the string and the ladder, and you throw it, and anyway, and I thought that was interesting. Anyway, they've got a lot of things, of course, DVDs and audiobooks as well. So I sent an email to Dr. Wargo. She said she would get on it, but would respond to me. But of course, it's the holidays, so they're on break. So I don't expect to hear anything back from her until January. But I went ahead and went through the Weldon Cooper for Center for Demographics and basically said the population range has decreased from two thousand twenty and state estimates the trend will slightly increase for the next. and state estimates the trend will slightly increase for the next, uh, 30 years. Following estimates of population for zero to 19 for the last three decimal, decennial censuses and projections by the Weldon Cooper for Center for Demographics for the next census years. I went into their spreadsheet and downloaded it and then added up all the people from zero to, I think it's zero to six and six to 10 and anyway, up, up to 19. And I, I, I just went ahead and struck 1980 because that's pretty old and just added, uh, the numbers, which are significantly smaller than 2000, 1368 for 2030. Of course, these are all projections. 1834 for 2040 and 1838 for 2050. So I didn't need the school board for that because that's just census data, but, um, it, 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 it has dropped off and I, I, I want Dr. Wargo to, to verify that when she, uh, responds. That, I wanted to put in slow population growth. They kept on, all the projections or some of the projections say we're still going to lose population. But if anybody knows after COVID, we've had an influence, a small influx of population.
Yeah.
And, uh, the childbearing age group from 20 to 44, uh, is projected to remain constant at approximately 2,000 persons is what I, I got from that table, uh, through 2050, uh, from the Weldon Cooper Center. So I updated those. Um, uh, so we may have some more updates for that from Dr. Wargo.
I, I liked how that, and the, the main, oh, the, the first paragraph. This forecast points to here a little growth potential for school enrollment. And then I would suggest we add something like, which means that our buildings are sufficient capacity. There's no issue with needing additional construction for several features.
That's not, that's not accurate. That's not accurate.
What's not accurate?
Because they don't have any space now.
Well, that's, okay, so do we have a space issue?
I think, I think we're gonna have a space issue because the population has increased.
He said it's going down.
That looks like it's going down.
Yeah.
The projections.
School attendance has definitely gone down in the last 10 years. They're the most, they built something like a 60-foot archery range. I just can't imagine that there's going to be much of an audience for additional, additional structural.
Well, part of the reason you have this chapter in here is if you have public facilities, are they sufficient? We've already discussed recreation, they aren't, but in this case they appear to be and I think we need to say that.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Why are you, the impression is going up?
Because of traffic patterns, just general observation, traffic pattern, the population in Northumberland has increased.
Well, are, are they young couples? That's the question.
Yeah, I, I agree with you that there's more traffic on the road.
And, and I think the welding, uh, some of the data doesn't reflect that. And I think it needs going to take a, a year or two for them to catch up to that because, I mean, we're seeing it and I, I don't want to think about what the solid waste bill is going to be this year, but, um, yeah, it's, uh, uh, a lot of people decide to move into their second homes.
Yeah.
And sell their ones in the metropolis in early retirement.
And the speed at which they're driving on 360 suggests that they're elderly, not young.
Although you see some people blowing through Heathsville at rates.
So that's always been the case.
Wow.
So the schools and public buildings, uh, there were no changes to the big map, but of course the school board moved from out here, from, uh, Lottsburg. So I had to change that and, and so I put, built, made a new map that, um, shows there's no school board in Lottsburg. There's still a recycling center, but that the school board office is in Heathsville now, so updated that map. Let's see. Uh, I contacted the health department and there are 62 public water systems in, uh, Northumberland County and there are 38 community water systems, 20 transient systems and four non-transient systems. Please don't ask me to find them, but, uh, community water systems are full-time residents like a subdivision. Transient systems are like a marinas and campgrounds, uh, where you're not there all the time. And then what's non-transient systems? Anyway, um, the health department knows what they are. So the, the map shows 62. I did not redo that map, but I will. It's one of the ones I forgot. So then we get to the reservoirs and, and there was a statement there, a long-range strategy of surface, first surface impoundments is prudent. I think we, we hashed this out and that, uh, perhaps we should just re, instead of taking it in a position to say potential for future freshwater reservoirs and, and cite the study. I don't know what that was. Oh, that, this sentence was that we didn't want people building in the footprint of the reservoirs. But, uh, most of it's bottom land and I, I don't think anybody's going to build in it anyway. So, uh, and there's no zoning or anything that says we, there's nothing that we could do to prevent them, but I really don't think they're going to be building. People like to build on the high grounds so they have a view, not in the low lands. So we left the three in that were most promising. Uh, I added this just from all of our conversations. I think it, I think it encapsulates in a nutshell. The aforementioned study, that's the one that was done in 1969 that, that had all the reservoirs, was completed before the United States adopted the Clean Water Act and other environmental protection laws. And as such, lacks any kind of review of environmental impacts of construction, new drinking water reservoirs. Due to the current cost of environmental permitting, easement procurement, land purchase price, impoundment construction, water treatment plant construction cost, and last but not least, water distribution pipeline network, reservoirs are not financially viable options for the county at this time. In the future, if groundwater supply decreases drastically, then reservoirs may be an option. However, advancements in desalination techniques may be more cost-effective option in order to supply potable water to the citizens of the county. However, desalinization technology will still require a treatment plant site, pump stations, pump station sites, buildings and equipment to be constructed as well as a network of easements through private property to be purchased for pipelines that will need, be needed to distribute the potable water throughout the county. Both alternatives are currently not financially, they're not feasible due to financial considerations, but that may change in the future. And this second paragraph I think is most important. The county has never owned or operated a public water utility. As the county long ago decided to allow private utility company, companies the opportunity to serve potable water to the constituents of Northumberland County. It is unknown if the county wants to enter into the water supply public utility business in the future. That will be up to a future board supervisor to decide. I mean, it, there's no, we don't have any track record for doing water and, uh, so, you know, I don't even know if that's an option. We, we can't pave what we got now and we're going to take on something that's cost hundreds of millions of dollars, so.
But the water sys, but the water level is dropping. Am I correct?
Covering the aquifer.
Artesian wells and.
It's dropping, but not as fast. Um, uh, I, I, I need, I need to talk, uh, with DEQ about that. But the, the groundwater management area now requires users over, I think it's, uh, 300,000 gallons a day has to have a permit. So Omega has a permit. So that, if they, if it gets bad, then they'll start ratcheting down the permits and not letting large users use as much water as there, as there was, as they were able to. And I think there's efforts to get West Point, uh, paper plant off of, uh, groundwater and use river water.
Yeah.
Uh, and I haven't been keeping up with that, but, uh, when I was reading the Soil and Water Conservation District newsletter, the December newsletter, one of the, um, board directors from Northumberland is actually on a waters, on the water supply board. So I, I know him, Mr. Pritchard, so I may just, uh, give him a holler and, and talk to him and, and ask him what the current status is. I don't think Scott Cutlass is still at DEQ Waters or Water.
So, you know, my question is, any given day, the largest amount, the largest group of people in Northumberland County are gathered in the Heathsville area. When does Heathsville, although it's incorp, not incorporated, right? When does Heathsville start talking about a sewage and water system?
Well, I mean, that, that's the next section, but basically we're too spread out. It, it's just not cost effective. You, you can't, you, you, it, the number of people you would get subscribed would not be able to pay the debt service. So you couldn't make the minimum payments. So it would just be a spiral of losing money and losing money. And what you need is dense development close to each other where you don't have to run sewer lines as far.
But we're still losing money now and re, are we still losing, are we, isn't our system losing money and rebuilding Callio?
From what Mr. Tadlock has told me, currently, uh, the only thing that the county is paying for is, um, covering the salaries of the sanitary district. So we're getting better. We're not losing money, but we're still paying the salaries. The, the dues, the sewage fees are not paying for the salaries of the technicians that are operating it. But other than that.
It's floods, the collections issue over there, but, but Garfield, even if your premise is correct that the water level in the map refers is dropping, what Stewart has written there I think is still accurate. I think it's very well written by the way, so I, it's worth investigating, but I still think this is very good language.
Yeah. Again, you know, we want to defer, the, the board supervisors does what the board supervisors want to do and we want to defer to them, but we want to, we want to show the possibilities that are out there and which direction we could go in the future. And I'm not sure desaline is a desalination. I, I, I don't know whether desalinization or desalination is the right word, but, uh, I'm not sure that's even, uh, I mean, you still got to clean the water and treat the water. It's pretty much the same except you don't have to buy land for a reservoir. The logistics of transporting the water is the big thing, is to get it to everybody and we're spread out and that's, that's the problem.
But I, I think my, my concern is, my concern is, um, what you're saying is correct. We still have a large amount of homes that are on wells and we still have the highest cancer rate in the state in Northumberland. I mean, there's got to be some sort of connection there, you know?
Age, it may not be the water, maybe the fact that the older the population.
Yeah, there are a lot of shallow wells in this county.
Absolutely.
And they get agricultural runoffs.
Yep.
And that's the most frequent theory out there.
Is there any requirement for farmers that use, uh, artificial watering for them to tap into wells for irrigation? Do they have to have any kind of permit or anything?
Yeah, if it, it's 300,000 gallons a day, I believe.
How many gallons?
300,000 gallons a day, which is a, a good chunk.
A lot of money.
Well, I mean, you know, Lake Cowart used to do tomato growing and then, uh, I guess it was in the nineties when, uh, neighborhood wells started drying up and he voluntarily quit irrigating and doing tomatoes because, and he actually helped, uh, I think they call it packing a well, but anyway, it, it allows you to, to open up a well that's, that's older, to try to fix the ones that, that had problems with it. So, um, you know, I, I don't, I don't know. I think the agriculture community has less restrictions, but they still have that volume restrictions.
Yeah.
And, you know, vegetables, crops can be very lucrative, but you got to have the manpower to, to be able to tend them and harvest them and things of that nature. Um, but, so I, I'm going to need to redo the well map. I didn't get time to do that. Um, so sewage, sewage disposal, I emailed David Woolard with the sanitary district about the capacities and he told me that, uh, the Reedville Sewer is at, at operating about a third capacity except for weekends and holidays when seasonal residents occupy their second homes, which causes flow reach, to reach 50% of the treatment plant's total capacity at those times. The Callio Sewer is currently operating at three-quarter percent, three-quarter capacity and does not see the same weekend and holiday peaks that the Reedville system experiences. Uh, the Reedville treatment plant is designed to treat 200,000 gallons per day and the Callio plant is permitted for 60,000, but its actual capacity is 40,000. So I thought we would fix that and so I, I struck that. The permit doesn't, doesn't matter if you can't output that. I, I just wanted to rephrase this because it, it says there is a problem in the lower end of the county and I think that's sounding good. So I put in the lower end of the county, the Indian Creek community has soil problems and constraints that limit the use of septic systems, which has led to the county in the past to apply for a grant to install a community sewer system similar to Callio. The grant application was not economically feasible at that time and the county is continuing to weigh options to bring sewer to the area of Indian Creek. I don't know how we're going to fund that, so.
Is that last sounds even true? Is there anybody actually considering it?
I don't know. I mean, we could strike that whole paragraph. I don't, I don't think I'd be upset with it with somebody in Indian Creek, Mike. I, I don't know. The last time, when I was at the PC, when Kenny Eads was the county administrator, I, I went through the properties and, and, uh, ran, helped him run the numbers. So, um, you know, the, the, the problem again is the, the spread outness, the, the, the lack of density and that's not going to change. Uh, even if you build more houses, you still have to get to that house on the edge and it's still the same distance.
I would recommend putting a period after the word time and deleting the rest of the sentence.
Okay. Bear with me.
It gets down to economics too. A big company coming in like Aqua into a community, they're expensive. Subdivisions, uh, they put their own in and I'm not sure, uh, they don't do a better job.
Don't need a source. I mean, the subdivisions relying on the aquifer, that's one thing, but.
Right.
You're going to start tapping into other sources of water. First of all, you're going to have to have desalinate, desalinization.
Right.
And all that other stuff.
Right. In Hampton Roads, they actually have public wells that they draw water from and then desalinate the groundwater. From, uh, I don't know, saltwater intrusion, but they're also, if you recall, the Hampton Road Sanitation District is injecting wastewater into the ground to help push the freshwater and keep the saltwater at bay. So they're, according to DEQ, they have to match the chemistry of the aquifer. And, you know, I, when I first heard of this, I'm like, uh, it's been done in other parts of the world as well. And the other thing is that it doesn't affect, it, it doesn't add any nutrients to Chesapeake Bay when you push it in the ground. If you put it in the river, then you can create algae, you know, the whole reduce nutrients in the bay. If you shove it down the ground, then that's off the table. But, uh, uh, I just trust that DEQ knows what they're doing.
So the water they're putting in the ground is contaminated, you're saying?
No, it's wastewater. It's, it's, it's the water that comes out of the wastewater treatment plant. And then they have to adjust the chemistry so that it matches whatever the aquifer is. So however much just all solid, they may have to add stuff. But I mean, you know, the space station, they're drinking their wastewater. The astronauts are drinking. I'm not sure the sewage treatment plant is, but according to DEQ, it's, it's, uh, safe to put in the ground.
They've moved.
You're talking about the Reedville plant that was operating at third capacity.
Right.
So.
But that, that's on the, that's on the weekdays.
I hope they're getting.
On the weekend, it's 50% capacity.
Is there an optimal amount that they want to operate at?
I, I think they would just, I think they would just rather have a steady flow instead of having peaks and have to gear up for peaks and.
But.
Because the problems are going to happen when you have those high flows.
Then they've got five months out of the year where it's zip.
Well, I mean, I, I, yeah, I mean, I, I, I just, I basically just, you know, I, he sent me a couple of paragraphs, a couple of sentences and I just added that to it. I, I don't know what they would like, but, uh, I'm sure it poses challenges having low flows and high flows and having to adjust the mixture and things of that nature. Uh, I'm, I'm sure they would rather have a steady flow, uh, but it is what it is. So, um, I, I took out a peer too because none of the other villages in the county meet the current requirements for similar grants. Again, the low population districts, even the spread outness of us in this world. Again, the low population districts, even the spread-outness of us in this rural area. And the maps haven't changed with the extent of the sewer. I did learn, and I didn't know this before, even though I was in the capital improvement committee, that the, in his email he sent about the Fleaton, Fleaton is a vacuum system. So there is a pressure, and it has pots that fill up and then vacuum, and, and basically means it's going uphill. And the Reedville proper system is gravity-fed, so it's all going downhill to the sewage treatment plant. But Fleaton, actually, you have to pump it. And so that's interesting, and then we've all heard about the vacuum pots, how they're problematic. They last for about 20 or 30 years after you're placed. Emergency services, I, I had to update this with regards to, we now have paid rescue services, rescue squads, as well as volunteer. The fire districts did not, map did not change, however, the rescues districts did. There used to be a rescue unit in Reedville, but they disbanded that and sold the property. So I had to get rid of that. And in addition, there is now the paid rescue at, here in Eastville. So I went ahead and modified the map, so I deleted that one in Reedville, added the paid one that kind of covers up the Eastville thing, and then put a legend for the, it's, it's called the Northumberland County, Northumberland Department of Emergency Services. And I thought it was Rescue Squad, but they said, "No, it's just the Northumberland County Department of Emergency Services." But I put parentheses, since there's colors for all the other ones, there's no color for this one. If they serve the entire county. So I didn't feel like putting another boundary around the outside. Anyway, just explain it that way. And so, and here, I had to do the same thing, get rid of the station in Reedville, and just say that there's, they have a, at Burgess, their, their only station is at Burgess. And then added here that the Northumberland Department of Emergency Services, the paid rescue squad located Eastville across an old courthouse, and reiterated that covers the entire county when volunteer rescue squads are unavailable or busy. I, I took this, I did this on my own. This is a paragraph that talks about the problem of recruiting volunteers for the rescue squads and that, that the board supervisors recently agreed to hire a chief of emergency service and basically create the rescue squad that we just said has been created. So it's kind of history, ancient history, and this, this basically says that. But doubt all the details that we do have a paid squad now. So the solid waste collections, at the very last sentence, was about the hazardous waste. I wanted to make sure, it says, "The Northern Exile and Water Conservation District has been conducting semi-annual hazardous waste and electronic waste collections in, in the spring and fall." But I wanted to make sure that it's not the Soil and Water Conservation District doing this out of the goodness of their heart. The county is paying them and they're contracting them to do that, so I wanted that to be clear. The animal shelter must have been new the last time, and instead of had been built, I just put is located because it's been there for quite a while. I emailed the Sheriff Beecham about the status and, and sent him this section to make sure that that's still accurate, and if he wanted to add, and he said he would get back to me. The sheriff is the person in charge of that. The emergency preparedness, I just left it as it is. Mr. Cost asked if we're doing any of this. And there's been a big giant push for resilience in the state and the federal government. And this is part of the resilience things. And I, I would like to take that to the chief of emergency services, because that's sort of what he does.
What year was Hurricane Isabel?
2009, but it was the last big storm.
Put that in there.
Okay.
Was it 2009?
446. And I'll, I'll mention it was the last, the, the last tropical storm that.
I thought Isabel was 2003. I didn't think it was '09.
Okay.
I think it was '03.
All right, I'll look up the year of Isabel. I know that Ernesto, for me, caused more damage than Isabel, but anyway.
Yeah.
I lost Shingles in Ernesto, but not Isabel.
I'm fairly confident it was, whenever was, Katrina was 2005? Anyway, I think Isabel's 2003.
Okay.
I think you're right.
Okay.
It says right here, September 8, 2003. Up to the 100-year projection for Isabel. It got the tie, got that.
The Bluff Point area, I need to talk with Mr. Tadlock, but I've heard nothing at all regarding this. I, I do know that James Madison owns a house on Galway Drive, and I did go and speak to them about nutrients and groundwater and things. I think it was the first year I was hired by Northumberland County. But it's just a residential house, they take kayaks out. And as far as building a big complex or anything like that, I don't think that's in, in the offing right now. But I will make, I will talk with Mr. Tadlock tomorrow about that. If he's heard any rumblings about JMU creating any kind of educational facility. And that was for, was that 447, 446? Health services, this, I went through the Weldon Cooper Center for Demographics and calculated the percentage of population over 65 years of age by 2030 is expected to be 37.5%. And in 2030, I'm sorry, currently, it's 37.5%. And in 2030, the number is expected to be 42%. This is a little bit higher. The hospitals, of course, have changed ownership, so I basically just said that Rappahannock General Hospital is part of Bosticore's Virginia Health System. Riverside Tappanik Hospital is linked to the Virginia Commonwealth University Health. And this was a few years ago, but Rappahannock Hospital closed its maternity ward. I checked the Northern Exile Free Health Clinic, and they're still working down in Kilmarnock, so I left that in there. I, I haven't done it, but I need to, I wanted to send this to the Disability Services Board and see if they have any, if they have any updates for this. But I changed disabled to incapacitated, because that's what's on their website, to be kinder and gentler, I guess. Bay aging, I sent an email to Patrick Fair to add this, and sent him the text and asked him if, if this is accurate, if we need changes, and hopefully, he'll get back with me in January. And the Northern Exile Disabilities Board is now called the Middle Peninsula Northern Exile Community Services Board. So I sent an email to the executive director of that with a section here and tell her that it was, it talks about 1999 creation, so I'm, I'm not sure this was changed at all in 2016.
Go back up to the projection of the age of people. Let me add it up there, just a second.
Yeah.
42? Is that in there?
Yeah.
All right, so it's currently 37%, is that right?
Yeah, 37.5% of the population is over 65.
And then in six years, it's going to be 42%.
Right.
So that's going to give some relief to our school system, looks like to me. Because those people probably not having that cool kids.
And I booed the funeral home.
That's right.
If it goes up 5% in six years, it means those aren't childbearing age people either, they're in their 50s now.
Right?
So I, I sent the executive director of the Community Services Board this and asked him if she could update that, and told her we just needed an outline, and we'll put the website and save you more, more information, go to this website. I took Mr. Cost's suggestion, and instead of this long section explaining everything, we put it all in one paragraph that states, "The Commonwealth of Virginia through the Northumberland County Department of Social Services administers a number of federal and state programs, including the ANF." I should probably spell that out. AFDC, generally state and local hospitalization, Medicaid, family access to medical security, food stamps, fuel cooling assistance, child protective services, foster care services for children, employment services, childcare, and others. More information about these programs can be obtained at the state DSS website at that and by visiting the office of Northumberland County Department of Social Services. So that cleared out a page and a half. I sent the sheriff this section on this child, child abuse and sexual assault, and asked him if it was still active, and if not, to let me know, and I could delete it. I went through this community sport and went to the Interfaith Service Council, it's still operating down in Kilmarnock. I could not find anything on church resource services. So I struck that and left the rest of it the same. With the housing.
I said that's a generic thing. Churches provide various resources. It shouldn't be capitalized, but I agree, strike it.
Well, I mean, I can leave it in there, but we talked about some of the programs down here. I just, it had VPI extension, and I don't know how many people know VPI is Virginia Tech, but anyway, it's Virginia Cooperative Extension is the proper name for that. And then this file is just quick and dirty, who does what with recreational water supply, and I didn't see any changes needed for that. So that, that's basically it.
So are we leaving the housing section in? I missed, I'm, I'm sorry.
I didn't, I didn't make any changes. Mr. Cost asked why this was in here. It's not a public facility. But I do know that Lancaster's been trying to address this, and I have not. I mean, they did pass the apartment building in Callio, but as far as the board supervisor taking any active role in affordable housing, I haven't, we haven't, I don't know of anything that we've been doing for that. I think it says, "This policy and related strategies and recommendations should be developed by a proposed Northumberland County Housing Committee or equivalent organization to be established after the completion of a needs assessment." So that's saying, number one, we need to do a housing needs assessment. And after that, we need to create a committee. So I don't know what, how much the board has for this, and perhaps this is the time we should ask Mr. Haney how he feels about this, but.
Well, I don't know what other section it would, I mean, I think affordable housing is something that we should mention. I mean, it's a.
Somewhere it should be.
It's a county issue. I, I kind of agree with Mr. Cost, and it doesn't seem to fit into public facilities, but I'm not sure where else it would fit.
Probably doesn't.
And I don't want us to lose track of it, because I do think it's an issue.
One thing we could do to sort of make it relevant is say, you know, leave it where it is, but say, "The county is not in the public housing business, but we have a problem."
Yeah. I have no problem with that. I just don't want us to lose track of it as a problem.
Right.
Even though it may not really fit in this chapter, I'm not sure where else it would fit.
Yeah, so I think we put the caveat in there, "We, we don't do this, but it needs to be done."
Yeah.
Know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry to make you go back.
No, that's fine.
You need to ask Richard anything?
I, I mean, if, if, it was in there, so I, I don't see how we'd get in trouble by leaving it in there. But if, if Mr. Haney doesn't feel as differently, he's welcome to speak up. It's what was there for the past 20 years. But, you know, creating a needs assessment is going to cost money, and then getting a committee together is going to cost resources as well. But.
That is one of the things that is going to probably be radically affected by the new administration. Because the funding for public housing is going to go down a lot. And Garfield, who probably has better information than I have, but it's, you know, not on, it's never been deemed as anybody's priority, let's put it that way. And there have been murmurs about, even about, about this. So, you know, I don't know.
There is some interest in that.
Yeah.
We just.
I think it still needs to be identified as a problem. If somebody comes along and wants to do something really nice for Northumberland County, they should know that that's a problem.
I'm not suggesting we take it out.
Yeah, so, yeah.
It's very difficult to be certain of by anything.
Well, for sure.
Mr. Haney is ready, he would like to speak.
Richard, go ahead.
I would like to see y'all leave it in there like you're planning on doing it. And with whatever changes that you wanted to do are certainly fine by me. You know, I, I don't want to take it out, because it's something that we need in there.
Yeah, Mr. Cost had mentioned that.
So.
Mr. Cost had mentioned that the Economic Development Commission, as far as our workforce development, may be looking into this issue as well.
Maybe we send this paragraph to Karen Peek and let her have a look and see if she has any suggestions.
Okay.
Okay, so far, we'll just leave it in?
Yeah.
Okay.
With the addition that it's not technically a public housing issue.
This county is not, not in the public housing business, but is an important issue that needs to be addressed. Okay?
I don't know. We've got real estate here.
Well, one of the things that I, I found interesting is that you cannot build an apartment complex in Northumberland County without a conditional use permit. And that's something I think, I'm, I'm not saying that there's political will to do that, but that's something, you know, that's $1,000 off the bat just to see if you can do, do what you want to do. I don't know. I, I know people in subdivisions may not want multifamily houses nearby, but I don't know how, how we would handle that. But it, it does seem like it's kind of an impediment to apartment complexes.
If there is a, a strong need in the county for something like this, does the county have any latitude to give some relief on that $1,000?
Well, the $1,000 is really just the cost recovery. I mean, they're charging us $250 a week to advertise. We have to advertise two weeks for a planning commission and two weeks for the board. So we're breaking even if that, and it's just to cover the advertising.
It seems like you need to give some incentive or carrot out there to help people nudge in that direction if they're going to do something that's good for the county, that there is a need for.
Right.
How do we define an apartment complex? Like, I mean, I know we have some multifamily units.
Anything, anything more than a duplex.
Anything more than a duplex.
I believe, yeah. A duplex is not an apartment.
We do have some duplexes around.
Yes.
Go ahead, Richard.
I don't have anything else to say, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas to everyone, too.
All right, same to you, Richard.
Merry Christmas, Rick.
That's all I have, Chairman.
I just want to say you've done a stellar job of taking all these comments and discussions.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
A lot of work and a good job.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion items? There are none?
One, one thought about this, again, I completely agree, you did a great job. I thank you for doing it. As I read through chapter two again, I didn't see a lot of comments reference in that section, which is about strategies and goals and all that, that talks about this section. There, there's not a lot of chapter four stuff in there. And I don't know why that is. I think that because this is a very long chapter, has lots of issues, occasional recommendations, that we need to go back through chapter two and figure out, are there things in here, excuse me, chapter two, are there things in chapter four that should be in that table in chapter two? Right now, almost the whole, all of chapter two is almost all about chapter one. And it just seems like it's really imbalanced.
Okay, we can take a look at that.
I, I would, I would appreciate any assistance you could provide, and I'll do what I can.
I'll be happy to work with you.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll be happy to work with you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Just for the other commission members, Mr. Cost asked for Chapter Two to look at the changes that we had suggested that because he had missed a few meetings. So I sent it to him by email and he reviewed it and had some comments and that's where that came from. And as I mentioned, we're going to go through all this before the public hearing and I want y'all to be sure that everything I've done is what y'all want. And I can, so we're going to review it all again, but-
I'm going to tee this up for the rest of our conversation, not for discussion tonight, but I believe that Chapter Two is in the wrong order. I think it should be Chapter One because it's basically an executive summary in tabular form. And to have it come after Chapter Two just doesn't seem like a good fit. And so there's some structural things like that I think we need to have a look at again.
All right. Bring that back up in January then.
Speaking of January, is there anything new on the application requests for Festival Hall and Rebuild?
The applicant, well, the opposition is still adamant they do not want anything's own business. They're afraid that later on down the road, they're going to quit doing the park and build a Dollar General store. So they don't want the rezoning to happen. Mr. Marston has been in touch with the applicant and asking if they would like to offer proffers and that's where we're at now. So we'll see what's going on with that in the future. We do have another conditional use permit that we're going to have to, I'm going to advertise tomorrow for the Westmoreland Players property out on three sixty on the other side of Calio. They want to increase the size of their sign. And so when the original conditional use permit was, for some reason, they were told they had to have a smaller sign. And so it's smaller than what the regulations, sign regulations allow. And now they want to get a bigger sign. And so I'll have to do some research to fill up about that, but that's coming for a public hearing as well in January.
And will the new sign still fit within our ordinance?
Yeah, yeah. He wants to go-
But because they already have a conditional use permit, they have to get their conditional use-
Well, one of the conditions with the board when they did it-
Right.
-was that they had to be a smaller sign. And we look back at the minutes of the board meeting and it doesn't seem to be very explain why, who wanted a smaller sign or why it was. So it should be an industry meeting.
Considering the one across the street in front of the Baptist Church, which I think is very large.
Well, I mean, our county ordinance is not for small signs. I mean, you can have a pretty good sized sign under our existing ordinance.
It's, first of all, it shouldn't be the Northumberland Players.
Yeah, I was going to say that, too.
Or the Calio Players, they could use bigger letters on a smaller sign. But anyway, it just seems in Congress they face those kinds of limitations and I don't, I can't think of a reason why they should. Particularly with the signage around them.
I think that you could be on signs with the people moving like out of Las Vegas. I think that'd be a really cool addition in the county.
We ought to talk about that one time, about how fast the letters could scroll. Because you didn't, you wanted them to move at a certain speed so you wouldn't have people either speeding up or slowing down to try to read the sign. I don't remember what the optimal speed is, but it's in there somewhere.
Which I don't go very often.
Maybe that's why the, you know, thinking of a smaller sign size, because they didn't want people to, you know, slow down to read it or speed up to read it. Maybe there was some perceived impact on traffic. Which after VDOT rearranges downtown in Calio, shouldn't be a problem.
The Dollar Store and Burgess, that's a tremendous sign they've got there. I don't know how big it is, but that's a big sign.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure they don't want anything bigger than that.
I have not actually read the application.
All right.
But I think we should condition all this under name change. There's nothing about this operations in Westmoreland County.
Okay.
Draw bigger from making Las Vegas players.
Really? Hollywood?
There you go.
Board of Supervisors.
At the December twelfth Board of Supervisors meeting, there were two public hearings. One was tabled from a regular meeting in November, an amendment to consider amending the Northumberland County Code, Chapter eighty-three hunting. The proposed amendment would permit the hunting of deer with a rifle of a caliber larger than point two-three from an elevated platform at least eight feet above the ground level in Northumberland County as permitted by the Code of Virginia. They were for that, but there was some discussion about whether that the person with the rifle could only, could not have the rifle loaded on the ground or transiting up. It could only be loaded when you're on the platform itself. And then they had this, then they had a discussion about if you shoot an animal and it is, you're tracking it and it's walked away and you need to dispatch it, it's permissible to load your rifle and dispatch the animal on its main way. So they had to, they made it more strict, so they had to re-advertise it. So that will be coming back in January for them to look at. The thought process is that it's very flat here and it's not like the mountains and bullets travel a long distance and so they want to use small caliber for hunting, but if you're on a platform, the bullet should go down into the earth. Right. But anyway, more to come on that. The request by Roger M. Evans, Jr., owner for a conditional use permit to allow construction of a boathouse on property zone R two residential waterfront was passed unanimously. So he got his boathouse. And that was it.
The board also heard from the sheriff. Remember back to the capital planning discussion we had, they approved the body cans.
Yes.
And I think that they ultimately decided to build the twenty-one, which is where we at right now, they've only got seventeen. And then the Chief Alderson was also there on the ambulance and the light pack that we had recommended approval for. Those were our three highest priorities. Submitted our proposals, they were approved. There was some, they had to work through some minor issues on details.
Was there any talk, when they were talking about the firearms, they went to straight walled cartridges only. I know some states do that and-
I don't know what a straight walled cartridge is.
It doesn't typically have as high velocity as some of the-
There was discussion about what constitutes loaded and unloaded and according to Department of Wildlife Resources, it's either a bullet in the chamber or a bullet in a magazine. So you have to actually have the magazine detached. But a black powder rifle is not considered loaded unless it can have powder and a ball in there, but if it doesn't have the primer cap or the battery that's the igniter, then it's not loaded. Anyway, so they wanted to follow and mimic the Department of Wildlife Resources terminology with regards to loading.
Going back to the Rebuild issue about the park. Is it possible that it could be rezoned, isn't it? And if it ceases to be a park, that it would revert back to its current?
Yeah, I don't really want to get into this too much because they're still negotiating and of course, Mr. Marston, but I'm not sure if that doesn't have to be offered by the applicant. But that could be a condition on that. And there was also discussion of possibly just doing the Festival Hall rezoning and not trying to do the park. So it's all up in the air now. The board, the Greater Rebuild Association Board met yesterday, from what I understand, yesterday night, so we haven't heard anything since then, but they're probably going to make some kind of decision then. And I will send out the comments that I've received that were opposed to the project in the early December before the meeting. And if we get any more, I haven't sent those comments out yet, but I will.
So you are going to be advertising for the public hearings on those two issues?
No, I've already advertised back in November.
Oh, okay. So the fact that we've-
It's been tabled. So, but I don't know, I don't, I mean, the applicant could withdraw the whole thing.
Right.
It depends on what, it all depends on what the applicant wants to do now.
Okay. I'm sorry. Yeah, I got you.
And-
So it'll be able to work that out?
Well, I know the board seemed that it would be an asset to the county and, you know, it is very tight residential there as well and I can understand their problems too, but hopefully we can all get along and try and improve.
Why wouldn't the library or whoever is behind the park, why wouldn't they agree to the condition that never be commercially developed?
I don't know why they wouldn't. But it's not the, it's not the Executive Director that makes that, the board has to make the decision. So they may very well have done that at the last meeting, but it's not like, I mean, they have to meet and decide together, so.
Is there any reason why we as a board couldn't have put that condition on the conditional use permit, that never be developed for commercial purposes?
We could recommend to add that as a condition, but we could recommend to the board to add that condition, but it's up to the board, whatever they want to do.
With the definition of commercial purposes? Yeah. I think that sometimes you can do yourself more harm by adding to it.
Yeah, you get too specific and-
Yeah, you get too specific and then, yeah.
We could hurt ourselves badly on that.
A prohibition or changing the character of the parcel, would that do the same thing?
I'm not sure. Mr. Marston recommended we don't discuss this.
Yeah, I don't think we should.
Is that why you ran on or-
No, I think he, I didn't think he wanted to get home. But, yeah, I mean, we need to wait for the public hearing to have all this out.
There you go. Okay.
Who will adjourn?
Let's get, pump the comments. Anybody online or Zoom have anything to say? All righty. Entend a motion for adjournment then.
Who will adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy New Year. Enjoy your holidays.
Certainly, absolutely.